We ready, Mr. President? Mr. Cox, you ready?
Meetings called to order. Good evening.
Evening.
First, silence your electronic devices if you have. All right. Invocation. Invocation and pledge.
Father, I thank you so much for the city council and the people coming tonight, and I prayed you'd give them wisdom and understanding and decisions they make, and just helping them as they make wise choices, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
Would you pledge with me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic whose change, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Open policymaking and legislative session. Excuse me. Can council members sign in, please? Now to Councilman Faircloth absent.
Mr. President, also JB Whitten.
Excuse me.
We didn't know.
Yes, we're down to three this evening, excuse me, yes. Councilman Whitten and Councilman Faircloth absent. We do have a quorum of three.
Mr. President, is your mic down? It's hard to hear. David can't even hear you down here.
See if we can turn it up. I don't have much voice. All right. Approve agenda.
Mr. Cox, I have a couple, one thing, a couple of changes I would like to add to the agenda. Under resolutions, I would like to add Resolution 1919, which I sent to the board today and added into, and also to the packet. And also consent agenda, item A, Mr. Holly's bill should be thirty-five hundred, not thirty-six seventy-five. And also, once the city manager's agreement is approved, I have a couple of items I'd like to add there.
All right, with those changes, do we have approval of agenda?
Mr. President.
Yes.
I move to approve the consent agenda items A, B, C, D, E, and F.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
We're not the consent agenda yet.
It's approving.
Just the.
Excuse me. We're approving the agenda.
Yeah, you called for an approving the agenda, but you didn't say consent agenda.
Correct.
Did or didn't?
I did not.
I want to make sure. Go ahead.
We're just approving this evening's agenda.
Mr. President, I move that we approve the agenda with the two, with the additions that were stated by the clerk.
We have a motion and a second. Go to your voting. Agenda approved. Special presentations.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. We have some folks who want to recognize tonight, they're not with us, but I'll turn these certificates over to their department heads. From the fire department, we have a fifteen-year service award to Daniel Ermy, and we have a twenty-year service award from fire department to Alan Clifton. Now, department heads, if any of these folks happen to be here, you let me know. And the birth management department, we have a twenty-year service award for Sunita Oglesby. And in the public services department, a five-year award to Robert Collinsworth, a five-year award to Avery Johnson, and a fifteen-year service award to George Hillsman, and a five-year service award to Howard Peckham. And I'll make sure that the department heads can pass these out to them in their department committees. Thank you, sir.
Any other special presentations, Main Street?
Good evening, everybody. My name's Paul Lowery. I am the president of the Main Street Cresview Association, and we're here tonight to hand out the awards for the Christmas parade entries. I know we're a little late this year, and we appreciate everybody that said will come out and make it tonight for those awards. As you know, this past January, we had, or excuse me, December, we had two events scheduled. One was the Christmas parade for Saturday, and then the third Saturday was going to be our Christmas market. So Mother Nature didn't play with us this year, and we moved the Christmas parade back two weeks, and it fell on the same day with our Christmas market. And we were able to pull it off with a lot of volunteers, support from the city, and we greatly appreciate everything we get from them. Anyway, I'd like to just end that week, but I don't think we have everybody here for the presentation. So, we all begin. Thank you, sir. I heard it was a great parade. I wasn't there, but somebody rubbed sand in both my eyes and made me go pee. And it's the first one I've missed in forty years. And I was determined to go, and my wife was sort of lost about stuff like this. All right, we have the original, that's first place, is Zep Watch Septic. Come on up. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody else here for Christmas parade? Should we go ahead and at least mention them? For our, you want to read these?
No, I'll have to read them.
Okay. Maybe first place, Zep Watch Septic was first place for original. Second place for that category is Freedom Tax Service Plus. For festive, first place was Acrobats Ariel Silks Club, and second place was Knights of Columbus, the Tacky. First place was Cresview Area Youth Association, and second place was Adams Party Voucher. And so we appreciate all those participants. Thank you all. Paul, I forgot one up here, could you come back and help me, please? This one says, "With our greatest appreciation, we present Paul Lowery with this award in recognition for your dedicated service to Main Street Cresview Association, presented on February seventh, 2019." You've been a great president for that group, been very active.
I agree with you. Thank you very much.
Item six, approval of minutes.
Mr. President, I move to approve the minutes from December tenth, 2018 council meeting, January tenth, 2019 special meeting, and the January fourteenth, 2019 council meeting.
Mr. President, show a second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? If not, go to your vote. Meeting minutes approved, three to zero. Item seven, public hearing.
Ordinance number sixteen seventy-eight is up for public hearing tonight. Ordinance number sixteen seventy-eight reads by title, "An ordinance of the City of Cresview, Florida relating to the Cresview Community Redevelopment Agency, providing for authority amending Chapter Two, Division Four of the Code of Ordinances as amended by Ordinance fifteen ninety-eight, providing for amendment to Section Two dash ninety-six authority, Section Two dash ninety-nine Chairman and Vice Chairman, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, providing for sublimity, and providing for an effective date." This is the second reading of ordinance number sixteen seventy-eight.
Will entertain a motion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Block.
I move to adopt ordinance sixteen seventy-eight on the second reading, and send in the mayor, council president, and the city clerk for their signatures.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, go to the vote. Ordinance sixteen seventy-eight passes three to zero. Item eight, public opportunity on council propositions. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak on an item on this evening's agenda? Hearing none, we'll move on to item nine, consent agenda.
Mr. President.
Mr. Hayes.
I move to approve the consent agenda items B, C, D, E, and F.
Mr. President, question for a second. Hadn't item A already been corrected?
Yes, it was corrected when we approved the agenda.
Yeah, so you omitted it from your vote.
Okay, Mr. President, that's why I omitted it, too, because I didn't know if it would have to be brought up again.
Okay.
But if it's, since it's been corrected, I would like to add agenda item A to the consent agenda.
Yes. We have a motion and a second on consent agenda approval. Items A, B, C, D, E, and F. Go to your vote. Consent agenda passes three to zero. Item ten, resolutions.
Mr. Chairman, the first two resolutions that we'll be doing tonight, nineteen nine and nineteen ten, are in regards to the CDBG grant application that was presented at our last meeting, so that is what those, those two items will be in reference to. So Resolution nineteen oh nine is the City Community Development Plan, a resolution of the City of Cresview authorizing the implementation of the long-term and short-term objectives of the City of Cresview Community Development Plan. This is Resolution nineteen dash oh nine.
I'll open, entertain a motion?
Mr. President.
Go ahead.
Mr. President, I move to adopt Resolution nineteen dash zero nine.
Mr. President, show a second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, go to your vote. Resolution nineteen dash oh nine passes three to zero.
Resolution nineteen dash ten reads as follows, "A resolution authorizing the submission of an application for the small, mid, small cities community development block grant to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity for federal fiscal year 2017." This is Resolution nineteen ten. This again is part of the CDBG application, and 2017 is the correct year. I did ask that when I got the resolution, so.
Mr. President, I move to adopt Resolution nineteen dash ten.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, go to your vote. Resolution nineteen dash ten passes three to zero.
Resolution nineteen dash eleven, Adams Drive, Texas Parkway Sideway Improvement Grant, "A resolution by the City Council of Cresview, Florida to continue to support construction of pedestrian facilities in the City of Cresview with transportation alternative program funding to allow for the expense of up to twenty percent of the cost of the Adams Drive, Texas Parkway project, and providing for an effective date." This is Resolution nineteen dash eleven.
This is in conjunction with the sidewalks that were planned out for Adams Drive. We recently passed a resolution in support for pursuing these grants, Resolution nineteen oh seven. Now, the FDOT has come back with a twenty, requiring a twenty percent match for the cost of the grants to be included, and we have shown a breakdown for the Adams Drive and also following the Brackens Street project. And this can be in many different ways. It can be equipment, labor, it could actually be design. If we do the engineering design ourselves, that will relate so much of a funding, like for the engineering plans, I think they're lauding out about, on average, fifty, fifty thousand dollars in value for that. So in-kind can be a way to actually facilitate funding this. We can fund it with part of our budgets, so, but it just, this particular one, Resolution nineteen eleven, concerns with providing six thousand seven hundred forty-seven linear feet of eight-inch wide pedestrian and bike trails along the north side of Adams Drive to the west side of Texas Parkway, along the east side of Alabama Street going to Bob Sykes Elementary School and down to Northwood Ridgeburg School. And it is a part of our critical, it's a critical part of our overall master plan for sidewalks within the City of Cresview that is part of our comprehensive plan. Breakdown here puts in a proposed amount of four hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. Twenty percent of that would be in the ninety-two thousand dollar range. As I said, the twenty percent match can be the cost of any and all physical elements, equipment, and services provided by the city. Is there some questions you might have, or?
Even though you've answered my concern, because I had a question here, where's the funds coming from? And I understand the need for sidewalks in our city, I just want to know where the funds, but you've explained that some of, a large portion could come if we do the engineering or some of the other work parts there. So I have, I have no issues with that whatsoever, and I also had you mention, say something about budget, so there's some funds in the budget for sidewalk, I can't remember.
If there's, if there's some in there for, like, I don't know the exact breakdown for public services, but if public services uses, you know, has something allotted in their budget for clearing or prepping the right-of-ways, or maybe they have a piece of equipment that would be vital to this construction, they could actually lease or give a price that it would cost to utilize that piece of material, such as if they had maybe a, I don't know, a large piece of equipment they could lease out for a month and clear out the whole ninety-two thousand dollars.
I understand what you're saying.
You don't know, but it's, it's a give and take. It would also, if it needed to be something that we needed to put in next year's budget, some funds for that. First thing, we got to win the award in order to be able to.
I understand. I know that is falling on Mr. Steele, so I'd like to hear from him, I saw his hand anyway. Mr. Mayor, but.
This is Mr. Hayes, this is a grant application. We won't find out until June timeframe whether or not we win the grant. At that time, we will have plenty of opportunity to budget the matching fund requirement, and then can decide at the end if we want to provide any in-kind services, excuse me, to offset any of that matching fund requirement. So we have plenty of time, I think Trey told me through to year 2025. So we'll probably, our plan is go ahead and budget for it, whether we do it all this coming year or partially next year, but that's what we'll do, and we'll probably use funds like the, you know, some of our funds that we have for gas tax funding, something like that to help subsidize the matching fund requirement. It's just that case, and we may not get it. If it is, we, you know, no, no harm in trying, but if we do, it'll be great activity.
Okay. That's all I have, Mr. President. Theresa, let me add this to Mr. Steele also. Mr. Steele, do that this time, do we have any available funds, possibility, because I know we've got another issue, that both of these local, our total will be about a hundred and ten grand. Do we have anything available on the table at this time?
Not in current year budget, without moving some money around, reallocating it from other projects that have already approved, the total matching requirements for both of these is going to be a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and nine dollars.
Right.
We would have to, we have to reallocate money, move funding around if you wanted to do it this year. But that's all to be determined if the state gives us the grant. So it'll be, it'll be near new budget time anyway, by the time we find out, so it'll be something we can move forward with at that time.
Well, I want to go ahead this time and claim those grants right now. Okay?
Yes, sir.
Mr. President, and this is where people see where our city manager steps in to do what he can do along that line.
Let me.
Providing that we get a contract signed tonight.
Take a moment to recognize our city planner, Mr. Trey Dooley, stand up and be recognized. And he's been instrumental in sidewalks and the sidewalk program, and he's vice chair of the Technical Review Committee of the Oaklusso Walton TPO, and he's landed us five out of six top slots in the sidewalk program alone. It's a lot of effort on his part.
Absolutely. We like to keep him busy.
Yes.
All right. I'll entertain a motion on.
Mr. President, I don't recall getting a motion, but I make a motion to adopt Resolution nineteen dash eleven.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, go to your vote. Motion passed, three to zero. Resolution nineteen twelve.
Resolution nineteen twelve reads by title, "A resolution by the City Council of Cresview, Florida to continue to support construction of pedestrian facilities in the City of Cresview with transportation alternative program funding to allow for the expense of up to twenty percent the cost of Bracken Street sidewalk project, and providing for an effective date." This is Resolution nineteen dash twelve.
Gentlemen, first off, the print of the resolution is actually in your book at page one oh seven, is, should be numbered nineteen dash twelve, and on the resolution itself it says nineteen eleven.
Right, exactly.
The original has been corrected, but if you go to your agenda sheet on one oh five, it will show you the details for nineteen twelve, and it's properly numbered there. It's the same type scenario with the FDOT. The overall funding for the Bracken Street, which Resolution nineteen twelve concerns the bike and pedestrian path facility to be three thousand seven hundred and thirty-five feet of linear feet of eight-feet-wide asphalt path connecting the existing sidewalk along Highway ninety to Stillwell Boulevard. There's actually two sidewalk facilities in that area, one on Long Street and one on Stillwell, that have already been adopted into the District Three Work Plan, and this project proposes to tie into those already approved projects and create a system of sidewalks that will allow a far, a wider-reaching, safer means for the bike and pedestrian transportation in that particular area. Again, it's a form of matching, the overall runs one, about a hundred and eighty thousand, matching on that is nearly thirty-six thousand. That's a twenty percent match. So, is there any questions?
Is there a motion?
Mr. President, I move to adopt Resolution nineteen dash twelve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, go to your vote. Resolution nineteen twelve passes three to zero. Now, items, resolutions ten, C, F, G, H, and I are all out-of-city water service. Is there? Excuse me.
Okay. You ready for me? Okay.
Yes.
The items number ten E through ten I, identifying resolutions nineteen thirteen through nineteen seventeen, that represent addresses twelve twenty-eight Chestnut Avenue East, twenty-eight fifty-six Schaffner Avenue, thirteen seventy-four Cresview Chestnut Avenue East, forty-nine fifty-six DePolo Street, and thirteen eighty-six Chestnut Avenue East. Our request for out-of-city services to be provided to properties that have been served previously by the City of Cresview. The properties have existing taps and connections for utilities, have paid the proper impact fee for service. These properties have recently sold. The new owners are requesting continuation of the services. The resolutions allow for the petition for water services, the protest period, consultancy and availability of the utility, providing for services, confirmation that all fees have been paid, and the acceptance of an executed municipal services agreement between the. city of Crestview and the new property owner.
Is there anyone in the audience that will be speaking for or against petitions for water services to be provided? If no one from the public will be speaking concerning the request for out-of-city services, the resolutions shall be read by title and then voted on by the council. City Clerk shall read Resolution nineteen-thirteen by title.
Thank you, Mr. President. Resolution nineteen-thirteen reads by title. A resolution by the City Council of Crestview, Florida, accepting a petition for out-of-city water service, establishing water service for property located at one-two-two-eight Chestnut Avenue East, also known as sixteen-three-N-two-three-zero-four-five-zero-dash-zero-zero-zero-seven dash-zero-zero-five-B, Okaloosa County, Florida, allowing for written objections by citizens and, if necessary, a public hearing within thirty days from enactment of this resolution, providing for a municipal services agreement between the petitioner and the city and providing for an effective date. This is Resolution nineteen-thirteen.
Is there any objection by the council to this resolution? Hearing none, it passes unanimous. City Clerk shall read Resolution nineteen-fourteen by title.
Thank you, Mr. President. Resolution nineteen-fourteen reads by title. A resolution by the City Council of Crestview, Florida, accepting a petition for out-of-city water service, establishing a water service for property located at twenty-eight-fifty-six Shoffner Avenue, also known as twenty-one-three-N-two-three-one-six-seven-zero-dash-zero-zero-two-one dash-zero-five-zero-B, Okaloosa County, Florida, allowing for written objections by citizens and, if necessary, a public hearing within thirty days from enactment of this resolution, providing for a municipal services agreement between the petitioner and the city and providing for an effective date. This is Resolution nineteen-dash-fourteen.
Is there any objection by the council to this resolution? Hearing none, it passes unanimous. City Clerk shall read Resolution nineteen-fifteen by title.
Resolution nineteen-fifteen reads by title. A resolution by the City Council of Crestview, Florida, accepting a petition for out-of-city water service, establishing water service for property located at thirteen-seventy-four Chestnut Avenue East, also known as twenty-two-three-N-two-three-dash-zero-zero-zero-zero-dash-zero-zero-one-two dash-zero-zero-five-zero, Okaloosa County, Florida, allowing for written objections by citizens and, if necessary, a public hearing within thirty days from enactment of this resolution, providing for municipal services agreement between the petitioner and the city and providing for an effective date. This is Resolution nineteen-fifteen.
Is there any objection by the council to this resolution? Hearing none, it passes unanimous. City Clerk shall read Resolution nineteen-sixteen by title.
Resolution nineteen-sixteen reads by title. A resolution by the City Council of Crestview, Florida, accepting a petition for out-of-city water service, establishing water service for property located at forty-nine-fifty-six DePolo Street, also known as twenty-two-three-N-two-three-zero-zero-zero-zero-dash-zero-zero-two-six dash-zero-zero-one-zero, Okaloosa County, Florida, allowing for written objections by citizens and, if necessary, a public hearing within thirty days from enactment of this resolution, providing for a municipal services agreement between the petitioner and city and providing for an effective date. This is Resolution nineteen-sixteen.
Is there any objection by the council to this resolution? Hearing none, it passes unanimous. City Clerk shall read Resolution nineteen-seventeen by title.
Resolution nineteen-seventeen reads by title. A resolution by the City Council of Crestview, Florida, accepting a petition for out-of-city water service, establishing water service for property located at thirteen-eighty-six Chestnut Avenue East, also known as twenty-two-three-N-two-three-zero-zero-zero-zero-dash-zero-zero-one-six dash-zero-zero-zero-zero, Okaloosa County, Florida, allowing for written objections by citizens and, if necessary, a public hearing within thirty days from enactment of this resolution, providing for a municipal services agreement between the petitioner and city and providing for an effective date. This is Resolution nineteen-seventeen.
Is there any objection by the council to this resolution? Hearing none, it passes unanimous. Thank you. Item eleven.
Actually, we added the Resolution nineteen-nineteen.
Yes.
I presented you, gentlemen, with Resolution nineteen-dash-nineteen. At the budget season of last year, it was approved for the Public Services Department to purchase by lease agreement a freightliner, two-thousand-nineteen freightliner back truck. Since that time, we have been working with the bond attorney, the company that is doing the financing, and we have reached a tentative agreement. And it is the request of the City Clerk's office, the Public Services Department, that this resolution be passed. And the resolution being passed and the contract being passed is contingent upon final approval not only the city attorney but by the bond attorney. So what we're trying to do, as soon as we get all the kinks worked out of the contract, we will have to come back to the council, but it cannot be approved without both of them signing off on it.
Resolution nineteen-nineteen. Resolution authorizing and approving execution of a contract with Bank Porch South Equipment Finance, a division of Bank Porch South Bank. This is Resolution nineteen-nineteen.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I move to adopt Resolution nineteen-dash-nineteen.
Mr. President, so a second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, go to your vote. Resolution nineteen-dash-nineteen passes three to zero. Item eleven, committee reports. Any committee reports? Moving on, item twelve, scheduled presentations from the public. Is any public presentations? Hearing none. Item thirteen, project reports from and comments from mayor and council.
Mr. Cato was going to present this, or if I was going to present this?
Did you make comments?
No comments.
I guess I'll present. Well, item that's up for discussion, you gentlemen have been provided with a negotiated contract between the city and the city manager candidate, Mr. Timothy Bolduc. And all that awaits at this point is your approval.
Mr. President, on my comment, I'm concerned, I've had several calls from our residents of our city pertaining to our garbage collection. And I think Mr. Steele has also received a bunch of those things, that our current contract that we got is not fulfilling any compliance with this contract. So what I'd like to do at this time, current active city council person, I would like to say, I do hereby, this date, recommend that the city public work director, Mr. Wayne Steele, send a certified notice to Waste Pro management representative, placing waste parole on a thirty-day notice to bring their level of service in compliance with current contract for the garbage pickup for our citizens. If not, failure to do this or comply with their contract, the process will be begun to terminate their contract.
Mr. President, point of order. I thought we were talking about the contract for the city manager at this present time and not the other issue.
I had no other word to it than I changed it suddenly.
Mr. Block, we're.
We don't know where he needs a contract.
We're going to go back to, we'll get to that. Back to thirteen-A, discussion approval of city manager salary and benefits proposal. Betsy, do you have anything more to add?
No, you have two recommended motions. If you have no changes, then I would use the recommended motion. If it is approved, then we'll go on to a couple of other subjects I'd like to bring up before we move on.
What was that statement? Betsy, put that mic up so we can hear it.
You have two recommended motions. One, if you approve the contract as was negotiated, then your recommended motion is on your sheet to approve the city manager agreement as presented. So that is the recommended motion from the negotiation committee.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I'll make it from a recommended number one. I move to approve the city manager's agreement as presented.
A second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, go to your vote.
Mr. President.
City manager agreement passes as presented, three to zero. Excellent contract.
I have a couple of things that I'd like to do. Part of our negotiations, as you know, we got into a heavy discussion about the city manager's office several times. And part of our negotiations is that Mr. Bolduc, in his request, requested that his office not be so far away from the mayor. So I gave, I put in front of the three of you alternatives, which the IT office, which is the current IT office now, will become the mayor city manager's conference room or city conference room. It will fit. I've measured it three times. And that the current conference room will become either A, the city manager's office, or B, the mayor's office, depending. They can fight that out when they get on board. So that's a part of it, and that will be changed. So the room where IT used to be with the window looking at the utility office will now be your conference room. The other one is, I would really like to, with the council's indulgence, I would like to go ahead and swear in Mr. Bolduc so I can make him start work tomorrow.
No objection.
Pursuant to section eight-seven-six dash oh-five of the Florida statutes, the following oath is given as a condition of employment with the city of Crestview to be filed in the personnel record. Please repeat. Raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I, Timothy Bolduc.
I, Timothy Bolduc.
A citizen of the state of Florida and of the United States of America.
A citizen of the state of Florida and the United States of America.
And being employed by or an officer of the city of Crestview.
And being employed by or an officer of the city of Crestview.
And a recipient of public funds as such employer or officer.
And a recipient of public funds as such an employer or officer.
Do hereby solemnly swear affirm that I will support.
Do hereby solemnly swear or affirm that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States and the state of Florida.
Constitution of the United States and the state of Florida. So I'm here.
Very good. Very good.
Mr. President, I got a question. When does your office schedule to be ready?
Well, the office for me to occupy here will take a couple of weeks because Ms. Betsy has ordered some equipment for me. But with the contract, the way that it is written, and with me having sworn in, as of this moment, I am the acting city manager for the city of Crestview. So I actually will begin working immediately. As you noticed in the contract, what it said is that I'll be splitting time until my agreement with the city of Fort Walton Beach is complete. So my last full day there will be the twenty-eighth of this month, and I will be here in a full-time capacity on the first of next month. But I already have appointments scheduled for this week and look forward to working together with you guys beginning immediately. There's a lot of stuff to do, and I'm excited about it. And I've met with some of the staff already, and I'll be meeting with the remainder of the staff in the weeks to, days to come. So, and with that, Mr. Blocker, I would appreciate your permission for myself to meet with Mr. Steele about that agreement, and we'll get to work on it.
Please do.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. President, I would like to say that I've gotten, had several meetings with Mr. Bolduc, and daily, my confidence in him continues to grow as it did from the first time we had a meeting. Now, he asked me to get involved in that issue between the mayor's office and another office, and I respectfully declined. And that'll be for those two fellows to work at, and they'll do that, I'm sure, with no problem. But I do appreciate, it's been a long, it's been a long journey, and I think you'll end up being as impressed as everyone else who's met with this young man and what the plans he has for this city. And what's so exciting about it? You can't bring up a subject that he's not already aware of that's happening in the city. There's no learning curve there for him, and that's very positive. So I thank you all, thank you for approving the contract we worked on.
All right. Next item is request for alternate member to the library cooperative board.
So this has been brought up a couple of times, and we have not had a volunteer. And we are still looking for a volunteer, and it must be a voting member of the city council.
Mr. President, I'm a primary, so don't look at me. And I've only missed two meetings in six years, so I'm normally going to be there. So it's rare if I'm not there. So whoever volunteered, I mean, whoever is alternate, they probably, they might not even get a chance to ever go down there.
I'll volunteer to be the alternate. Item fourteen, staff reports and recommendations.
All right, fourteen-A, Mr. President, as you've noticed in the newspaper and Facebook and everywhere else, we've had some donations for a fourth K-9. At this point, that fourth K-9 is not part of our budget. So the police chief is requesting that that item be added to the budget going forward. It's probably, at this point, our counts, our money that has been donated will more than cover it, I believe, for this remainder of this year.
The money donated will cover the cost of the K-9, the training, and basically the per diem for the training. It's the sixty-nine oh-seven, I believe it is, that would have to be added to upfront charges.
Okay. The sixty-nine oh-seven is, okay. The, it's recommended that it be passed. This will give us a K-9 on every shift plus a one that can cover when the others are off. So I believe it's a good investment for the city of Crestview to have that fourth K-9, particularly since most of the cost is being done by citizens. And I would recommend the motion to move forward with the fourth K-9 and officer training.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I move to approve for the city police department to accept the donation from CCPAA and move forward with the acquisition and related activities in regard to a fourth K-9 and officer.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, go to your vote. Motion passes three to zero. Going to cop plan amendments. Going to comp plan amendments.
Page 157, if y'all looking for it.
Yes.
Ordinance number 1652 reads by title, "An ordinance of the city of Crestview, Florida, amending its adopted comprehensive plan, providing for authority, providing for findings of fact, providing for purpose, providing for changing the future land use designation from Okaloosa County mixed-use to city of Crestview public lands on approximately 100 acres, more or less, in Section 30, Township 3 North, Range 23 West, providing for future land use map amendment, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date." This is the first reading of ordinance number 1652.
Gentlemen, this is our comp plan amendment 18-1. It's not the first time you've seen it. It transmitted over and spent a little while dancing in Tallahassee. It's back to be formally adopted. So with no comments from the, from the different agencies. Just to, for the record, it is the 100 acres that belongs to the city of Crestview that is east of the Sprayfield, near 3MC Lane and Reta Lane. It's improved on the western side with some rib ponds, the infiltration ponds from the stormwater facility. It's also the 20, includes the 20 acres where the police department was contemplating placing a gun range. It's the request, the application has the request of assignment of public lands for the future land use, and public lands for the zoning. We will be entertaining ordinance 1653 immediately afterwards, in order to implement the zoning for it. The the proposed facilities that would, that might happen to occur on this property can be served by the city of Crestview's potable water, their sanitary sewer, and their garbage service there. So is there any questions? I know we've rehashed this particular parcel of land several times, so.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I move to adopt ordinance 1652 on the first reading and move to second reading.
Mr. President, so second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, go to your vote. Motion passes three to zero.
Ordinance number 1653 reads by title, "An ordinance of the city of Crestview, providing for the rezoning of 100 acres, more or less, of real property located in Section 30, Township 3 North, Range 23 West, from Okaloosa County mixed-use district zoning MU to the public lands district zoning P, providing for authority, providing for the updating of the Crestview zoning map, providing for the severability, and providing for an effective date." This is the first reading of ordinance number 1653.
Gentlemen, as I said, this is pertaining to our 100 acres. It will implement the public lands zoning regulations upon the property. The adoption of either of these two ordinances does not leadway to the approval of any development on the property. Development for the property will be presented to you at a time that there is a plan, and the site construction plans, and any building or facility plans would be presented to you at a later date. This is, particular ordinance 1653 is just for the zoning regulations.
I'll open a motion.
Mr. President, I move to adopt ordinance 1653 on the first reading and move to the second reading.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, go to your voting. Motion passes three to zero.
Ordinance number 1679 reads by title, "An ordinance of the city of Crestview, Florida, amending its adopted comprehensive plan, providing for authority, providing for findings of fact, providing for purpose, providing for changing the future land use designation from Okaloosa County mixed-use category to city of Crestview commercial future land use category on approximately 3.69 acres, more or less, in Section 7 and 18, Township 3 North, Range 23 West, providing for future land use map amendment, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date." This is the first reading of ordinance number 1679.
Gentlemen, this looks very familiar to you. It was just annexed a few weeks ago. It's the 3.69 acres that lie just to the west of the Spring Creek Apartments entranceway, sort of in the vicinity where there used to be the old bingo call. And it's owned, was and developed by Tates Oil. It has like a fueling station. And had multiple structures there for storage and things dealing with the petroleum industry. The exhibit that's included in your packet actually shows the conceptual development plan. And it shows the, a 2,500 square foot fast food restaurant, complete with a drive-through, a 4,000 square foot convenience store, and of course, several fueling stations. The large metal warehouse that is to the north will remain as is for storage. Commercial development will, commercial district will allow for this particular development. And if there's any questions you might have, feel free to ask.
Teresa, has there ever been a need for an analysis of that ground being performed?
I'm sure when they, they perform the new development, keep in mind, these ordinances do not touch the development itself. It's only conceptual. When they come to preparing the development stage of that property, they will probably run into those particular elements as far as the environmental part of it. Also, they'll have a traffic study, and just several different things that they will have to go through as part of the standard development process. But all those questions will be at that period of time. And of course, that development will have to come before you to have approval.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President,
Mr. Block.
I move to adopt it. We own 1679, direct?
Yes, yes.
On first reading, and I move to the second reading.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, go to your voting. Ordinance 1679 passes on the first reading, three to zero.
Ordinance number 1680, "An ordinance of the city of Crestview, Florida, providing for the rezoning of 3.69 acres, more or less, of real property located in Section 7 and 18, Township 3 North, Range 23 West, from the Okaloosa County mixed-use district zoning to the city of Crestview commercial district zoning C1, providing for authority, providing for the updating of the Crestview zoning map, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date." This is the first reading of ordinance number 1680.
Okay. 1680 is actually the zoning ordinance that will implement the zoning regulations on the, on the property that's in 1679, the Tate Oil property, the Phillips Energy that we're talking about. The 1680 will implement the commercial C1 zoning district regulations on the, that 3.69 acres.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I move to adopt ordinance 1680 on the first reading and move to the second.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, go to your voting. Motion passes three to zero.
Ordinance number 1681, "An ordinance of the city of Crestview, Florida, providing for the rezoning of 7.31 acres, more or less, of real property located in Section 32 and 33, Township 3 North, Range 23 West, from the public lands district zoning to the commercial district zoning C1 for 2.54 acres, more or less, and the single-family dwelling district R1 for 4.77 acres, more or less, providing for authority, providing for the updating of the Crestview zoning map, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date." This is the first reading of ordinance number 1681.
We would like to, to have a correction here. The, when the books went out, the, the main outline pages were already printed, and they quoted the 7.92 acres that the property appraiser actually quotes for this property. However, at last minute, when we received the descriptions, the acreage was corrected to 7.31, which is per the actual survey of the property. So Zev and Sarah Watts Trust, the property owners, have submitted applications for the change in the zoning designation for this 7.31 acre situated in Section 33, Township 3 North, Range 23 West, Okaloosa County, Florida. The 7.31 acres consist of a single parcel and has been unified into the parcel number of 333N230000010040 in the public records of Okaloosa County. The current land use classification is mixed use, and it carries the public lands zoning district. Okay, the application requests the assignment of commercial district designation and single-family residential be placed on the property. And that breakdown, according to the survey, is along the front, there is a, you will have a sketch that will actually show you the placement of the property. 2.41 will run along the roadway. It's approximately a little more of a 200-foot strip there. And the rear part of the property will be single-family dwelling district zoning R1 for 4.77 acres. They actually plan to build their home there. So is there any questions?
The zone C1 is along Live Oak Road there.
Yes, sir. It is, according to your exhibits, the light gray, it's just like a, about a 220-foot strip that runs along Live Oak. And there will be an access road that will actually lead back to the, to the property in the rear where they will be building their home. So.
Does that property have utilities on water on it at this time?
I'm not sure that it's tapped in. This will actually be provided by Okaloosa County Water. So, right across the street is Paul Cassidy's Camille Cove, and also his industrial parks. The one to the west side is actually constructed, and has the four, excuse me, the five industrial buildings. And to the, the west of, on Live Oak Church Road, they actually have the proposed mobile vehicle storage, yeah, the RV-type storage buildings there. So.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I move to adopt ordinance 1681 on the first reading and move to the second reading.
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, go to your voting. Motion passes three to zero.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, want to go back to, any anyone from staff? Have any reports or wish to speak?
Mr., I thought Madam Clerk might have mentioned it, but she might want to mention about the upcoming Northwest Florida League of Cities function, dinner?
I've heard from everyone in the, on the council, and we're set.
Okay.
There's, if you know anybody west of here, east of here, you need to get them to sign up, because we're lacking people from. I will let you know that we decided, in talking to Ms. Anderson with Northwest Florida League of Cities, what is gonna happen is we are encouraging people who are attending to bring gift cards from either Walmart or Home Depot, and they will be presented to the mayor of Malone to help his citizens in that area as a member of the Northwest Florida League of Cities. So, and please wear red, white, and blue.
And Ms., Mr. President, Jean Malone, which is the mayor, Jean Wright, which is the mayor of Malone, might not be here, but my understanding is he's gonna be in Washington, DC. You know, Malone was devastated also by the hurricane too, and he's been doing a great job down here trying to get that city back together and getting funds for it. So I talked with him a few days ago.
All right, any comments from the audience? I don't have any speaker cards. Anyone from the public wish to speak? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned.